I can have quiet, please, in the chamber. Thank you. I will call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority for July 26th. May we have roll call for council?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. And for the Housing Authority?
Authority members Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Brazian.
Here.
Chair Sinanian.
Thank you, your report?
Agenda for the July 26, 2016, joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was postponed on Friday, July 22, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and our first item?
Mayor, you have two items before you, and I believe that there has been a request with your approval to take the second item first.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. Director of Community Development, regarding proposal to provide additional funding for two San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity homeownership projects located at 806 East Chestnut Street and 36634 through 700 East Lomita Avenue. Two A is a Housing Authority motion approving the First Amendment to the Habitat Chestnut Affordable Housing Loan Agreement. Two B is a Housing Authority motion approving the amendment to 2014-15, 2016-17 HUD Home Action Plans. C is City Council motion approving the amendments to 2014-15, 2016-17 HUD Home Action Plans. And D, Housing Authority Resolution of Appropriation for the Habitat Chestnut Home Affordable Housing Project in an amount of $690,000. And E is a Housing Authority Resolution of Appropriation for the Habitat Lomita Homes Affordable Housing Project in an amount of $225,000.
Thank you, and Mr. Ochoa?
Yes ma'am, just very briefly, these are two projects that we have underway with our partners at Habitat for Humanity. On the Chestnut property, the intricacies of the site is a rather small site, this is three-story construction, they're running into some degree of cost increase and a shortage on some of the resources that would be donated, hence they are asking for an increase in the allotment of home funds. And on the Lomita project, the cost for relocation assistance simply is too low, and so they're asking again for home funds to allow both of these projects to go forward in the amount of $690,225,000 respectively, for those two projects. Absent any additional funding from the city, the projects, at least the Lomita project, simply goes away. The other project will also likely go away through the adjudication process. Okay, I'm sorry, then if you have any specific questions about that, Mr. Landsafame and his folks can answer that for you.
Okay, comments, questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. The relocation fee, what is that amount?
Relocation fee, we're asking for another $225,000. Mike Fortney, can you give me the breakdown? The increase is because of the tenants' income, it's lower than we expected, and there are more tenants than we expected.
Good afternoon, Housing Authority Board Member Garpetian. Yeah, the relocation costs were grossly underestimated on this project. The number comes from, it's basically the delta on what the current tenants are paying in rent right now versus what we think they will pay for a replacement unit. If it's state money, that delta is multiplied by 42 for 42 months. In this case, it's home, federal home funds, that delta is multiplied by 60. So that's where you get it. The other surprise to us, and this was a new experience for me, I haven't relocated in a couple of years, these are single-family homes, and the occupants are entitled to a single-family home. So you can't, it's tough to find a two-bed, one-bath, single-family home that rents for anywhere near what these long-term tenants have been paying.
What are they paying, just for?
Pardon?
Doesn't matter what they're paying.
No, it does, because we're talking about the delta. I have a rental somewhere.
I mean, the multiplier is extreme, 60?
Yeah, 60.
So if they're paying $1,000 below market?
They're paying $60,000 then. Yeah. The delta's actually bigger than that, yeah. They've been paying, one of the tenants, I think, has been in there for 15-plus years, and the rents just haven't gone up that much. The previous owner didn't raise the rent, so they're paying less than $1,000 a month.
And how many tenants are there?
One household is a couple, the other household is a couple with, I believe, two children.
So we have to pay the difference in rent, in what they're paying and what they can get today, in today's very affordable housing market out there, for five years, basically?
We have to pay the difference between what they're paying now and what we expect them to pay on a new unit.
For five years?
Yes, and that amount is an up-to amount. If they select a unit that's less than what we think a comparable unit, they'll wind up in, their relocation benefit will go down. So the number we're giving you is the up-to amount, yeah.
And, okay, so for future projects, I think, are we going to look at the areas that we can, we won't have to face this problem, or how are we going to address it? Because $225,000 is a large number for just a relocation fee.
Yeah, for always, I'm sorry, you'll always have this issue. As a public project, we're required to offer relocation benefits. They're a little bit different, State of California versus the federal government, but for all intents and purposes, they're four or five years, and you have to pay that delta, because as a public project, you're moving somebody out of that property.
If I could just add to that?
Long-standing code and regulation.
Yes, we'll always have this requirement of relocating, but I think one of the factors going into whether or not we acquire property to do an affordable housing project, armed with really what the costs are now, I think we can look at what the current rents are. We can do some sort of analysis and know, have a really good idea ahead of time, what the relocation benefits are going to be, and then factor that into whether or not we want to proceed.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Najarian?
Along those same lines. So, this isn't like not discovering unknown soil conditions. Someone calls the tenant, or gets a lease from the tenant, says, "How much are you paying?", and we, as a housing authority, certainly should know what the cost of a comparable, single-family home should be. How, who dropped the ball? Was this our problem, or did Habitat not make this?
It was not Habitat's, it was not. Part of it was the rule change from 42 months to 60 months for the federal, so that had a substantial increase on it. The other was, I did not know, I was not aware that the tenants in these single-family homes were entitled to a single-family home. I did not, I was not aware of that. So that was something I learned through this process. Habitat made no mistake in this whatsoever.
I'm just asking, I didn't mean to offend Habitat. But I hope we don't, I hope this doesn't happen again.
Right.
I mean, part of the shock is that we're somewhat down the road, and then boom, we're getting hit with this. With this amount. Lomita is six units, right?
Yes.
Six single families, if you like, yeah, okay. It's 40,000 units, it's digestible, but I know, I hear Mr. Najarian as well. And the other project, the Chestnut, what is, how much are we going to reinvest in the project?
The amount is $290,000, that's what staff's recommending.
$190,000? And this is for three units?
Yes.
I heard they're really nice units, I saw them, they're three stories with cash garage and everything. So $290,000, and, okay.
And, as I understand it, the money is budgeted, we do have the funds to make both of these requests, so.
Yeah, if I could add to that.
If you can explain that, because if you don't do this, we have to return the funds.
Yes.
That's where I was getting to, so.
Right, what we're doing with Chestnut is, we had originally invested low and moderate income funds, which are much more flexible for us. We are now proposing to take those funds out, put home funds in, and then add $290,000 additional home dollars. These are dollars that, if we don't commit by Sunday, go back to the federal government.
Good. Okay, well-used, well-used, for Habitat for Humanity.
I make a motion to approve the project, there are no other questions.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
Can we take all of those at once?
Roll call, can we take them both?
You can take all the Housing Authority items, so A, B, D, and E.
Okay.
And I heard a motion made by Authority Member Garpetian, the second was from?
And I think Councilmember?
Well, he's the chair, somebody else has to make the motion.
There are another?
Friedman, I think.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, we'll go.
Authority members Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Brazian.
Yes.
Chair Sinanian.
And do we need for housing as well?
microphone, please.
Okay, for housing and council? Okay.
Your motion for council?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is the first item that was listed on this agenda. I apologize for the delay for those in the audience, it is Director of Community Development regarding follow-up information report on rent control, rent mediation, and other citywide rent affordability-related issues. A is a City Council motion to receive and file report, or provide staff further direction as deemed necessary. B is Housing Authority motion to receive and file report and provide staff further direction as deemed necessary.
Thank you.
So.
Report?
Madam?
Oh, Mr. Councilmember Najarian?
I will again have to recuse myself from this issue, the reason being that I am an owner of rental units in Glendale, and the assumption that the law makes is that I will not be able to make a fair and balanced decision in discussing any issues involving rent control or anything affecting the use, management, and pricing of rental units. So, with the concurrence of the city attorney, I am recusing myself, although I would very much like to weigh in on this, I will not be able to.
You? Staff report, please.
Yes ma'am, with that, we were before you a couple of months ago with an overview, the original discussion had been focused on the tool commonly known as rent control or rate stabilization, rent stabilization, rather, in terms of dealing with escalating rents and the inability of many members of the community to keep up with that standard of living. We provided to you a great deal of information, largely demonstrating in cold antiseptic terms that rent control probably didn't achieve the intended goals, but that there was a plethora of other avenues to possibly walk down. Council had their own suggestions, indeed, council members, that you'll hear from Mr. Landsafame in just a second, had given a handful of suggestions that have been vetted by the city attorney's office, and we'll tell you what the disposition of those are. And to the extent council has asked for additional information, additional data to help give context, and additional solutions, we have provided a range, or universe, if you will, of possible actions for the Housing Authority and council to take. So with that, no further ado, Phil will walk you through, hopefully, a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. We'll go as briefly or as in-depth as you would like. Madam Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council and Housing Authority, Mr. Ochoa kind of gave you a little bit of an introduction, just as an overview, we're not alone in this issue, it really is a state issue, and in fact, it is an issue in the country, but it's more pronounced in California. Again, the objective that we heard from you is, we want to house people in Glendale affordably, so the objective is housing that is affordable. In the report, we're going to touch on these five different areas. To set Glendale in proper context, we wanted to take a step back and look. California is one of the most expensive, if not the most expensive place to live in the United States. A home cost, to buy a home, two and a half times higher, it is 50% higher to rent in California. The Legislative Analyst Office prepared a report last year outlining some of the main contributors to the lack of affordable housing, and they came to the conclusion that California is one of the most expensive places to rent or own a home. This is probably a key theme that you will see come up over and over, building less housing than there is the demand. The demand in housing, and for very different, for a variety of reasons, is putting a lot of pressure on the existing stock, and we're just not building housing fast enough to keep up with the demand. There is some recognition by the report that there's not enough attention that is given to affordable housing programs. Indeed, in 2012, the state legislature abolished the second-largest funding source for affordable housing in California, that being redevelopment, and has not come back as to date. Again, they make the finding, work in private construction of homes, if you add to the supply, you will relieve the demand, and by those rules that we all learned in high school, you will bring the cost of housing down to a more affordable rate. California has a shortage, we know that, we're also experiencing linger effects from the crash and the depression, and as you'll see in later off slides, this is really being exacerbated by the fact that our economy is quite hot. Growth of the housing costs have simply outpaced the average income. This is a very interesting slide, there's two of them, you'll see California here, that number is $29, almost $29, $28.89. That is the hourly rate it would cost to afford median rent in the state of California. So if somebody is working and trying to meet that median rent, they would need to earn almost $29 an hour. That converts to 89 hours a week at California's minimum wage.
Is that an average cost spread throughout the state, or am I correct to assume that it's higher in Los Angeles, San Francisco than it would be?
Yes, that's right.
Central Valley?
Right, and so we're comparing across the country, so we're using the entire state. But yes, in areas, that will be even higher.
And what's that median rent?
I'm sorry?
The rent, the median rent. You need to have, if you go back.
You would need, the median rent in California is about $1145, is the median rent in California.
Can you go back to that slide, please? So approximately $29 an hour, you need 89 hours a week?
Or, you would have to work 89 hours a week at minimum wage.
On minimum wage, okay, got it, thank you.
This is an interesting slide in that it's almost a formula for the situation we're in. California's economy has outpaced the nation in terms of jobs growth and output, which is creating a greater demand on the existing housing. We're creating jobs, people here going to work, or now they have the ability to move. A lot of millennials are staying at home, just now starting to go into the rental market or the homeownership market. So there's a greater demand for the existing homes. That in turn has a negative impact, yes.
Do you sure thought of it?
Negative impact on seniors, the underemployed, and the unemployed that are in those housing units. The solution is, most reports are calling, we just, as Californians, we need to build more housing. And that new production should have some balance between market rate and affordable. And even market rate will start to help the affordable supply.
Go back to the other slide, I just wanted to just be sure I understand it. So when you say that the 89 hours a week at minimum wage, so for a couple living, that would mean then that they would both be working 40, you know, 44 hours a week? But then what percentage of their total income is being considered going to rent in this scenario?
We look at 30%, 30% of their gross rent.
So this is with 30% going to gross?
Correct. Should equal 30, your housing cost should be 30%.
And that's the premise of this slide, then?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
So, that's kind of, that's the picture in the country, in the state, and then we wanted to put Glendale in context. Our median household income, and for the most part, these are all census-driven numbers so that we can compare them, and compare apples to apples with other cities, from the 210, 214 census. Median household income, about $51,000. If you use a rule of thumb that your gross income, or I'm sorry, the house you can afford is two and a half times your gross income, this median household income could support a home value of about $130,000. Our median home value in Glendale is almost $600,000. Homeownership is an issue, and we'll go through that, but I think it's part of this, needs to be part of the solution that we come up with. The percentage of houses that are cost burdened, and that means those that are paying more than 30% of their gross income for housing costs, together, total, is 57%. That's among both renters, where it's even higher, it's 64%, and homeowners. The ratio of renter to owner occupied households in Glendale, 66% are renting, 34% own.
So when you say households in that one, though, you're switching from individuals to couples? Because it said household.
Household. And our households in Glendale are about 2.8 people per household. When you ask?
Median income was per individual or per household?
Per household.
Okay, that answers that, okay, thanks.
This gives you some housing statistics of where people live. In Glendale, we have 61% that are living in a multifamily unit, versus the county and the state of 42 and 31. This 36% is, represents about 2% of our renters are renting single-family homes. Homeownership, home occupied, is about 34%, as we showed on the last slide. So you can see Glendale is just the reverse of the county and the state. Here's where people live, a breakdown of their ages, and as you would expect, as people get older, they're moving into owner-occupied homes, but we still don't ever break even 45%. So majority of our people, our residents, are living in some type of multifamily unit. This is a breakdown of household median income, $51,000, you'll see it right here, that's 49% are $50,000 and under. And I just ask you to keep in mind some of these images, these graphics, as we get to a larger illustration of the issue. This is where home values are, lot of homes in that 500 to $750,000 range, not so much, less than $300,000. In this graph, we're showing the percent of home values that are less than $250,000. Remember, our median could afford a home of about $130,000. There are 52% of the households in this affordable range, and 6%. So you have a big gap of availability. On the rent side, and that all goes to show that the housing is really out of whack. On the rent side, it's a little more, it's a little closer to reality. We present this because we wanted to show, Glendale rents are not exorbitant, the median is just over $1,300, that puts us right in the middle of LA County, we're 45th out of 88 cities. Pasadena and Burbank, even higher than Glendale. And then you see here, LA median, little bit lower than Glendale, but there's the state. So we're right on the money with our median rents and the state, so they're not exorbitant by any means.
And in LA, there's a huge swing, depending on where you are.
Yes. Again, we have to peg it to something, that's why we're using median. But this goes to show, this, if you keep that in mind, this is really the area that we're looking at. So while our rents may be right in line, our incomes are not, they're not keeping up with that housing cost. What this is representing is, this is the number of units that are affordable to somebody making less than $10,000, there's 3,275 households competing for those 417 units. And it goes up to, you get to 35%. Then it flip-flops, and you get a lot of affordability out this way. What we've found is this represents about 6,000 people and about 26,000, I'm sorry, 26,000 households and about 6,000 units, we're 20,000 units short. Now, we're not going to go build 20,000 units, we can't. We don't even have that kind of capacity for any kind of housing. But the idea is, we need to even this distribution out. And again, every report that we've seen calls for the construction of more housing. To the extent we can construct and develop more affordable housing, we get there faster. But even market-rate housing, appropriately built, will start to even this out, this distribution out. Now, that's not a call for build 20,000 units in Glendale, we still need to be appropriate and take into account quality of life. But to the extent that we can produce appropriate housing, we'll start to relieve the pressure that the lower incomes are starting to feel, or are feeling.
And on that last slide, you'll also see what the median ages are, across the top, there are those diamond shapes, and you can see 69 years old, 58 years old, that's speaking to a retired community or nearing retirement. So the prospects of increasing household income are significantly diminished at that point. So the problem that you're seeing here is a problem that's going to be sustained for some time.
So then, if I can ask a question, then what you're saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we have more homeownership, that will kind of somehow balance out the?
Not necessarily homeownership, although I think everybody would like to see it, but is, to the extent you add a new unit, even if you add it up in here, somebody that might be renting this, that can afford that, might move there. Let's say you build it in here, somebody that's renting this can now afford it, and they go into that category, which frees up a unit for that group, which frees up a unit for that group, which, again, you start to even out the distribution. This is, again, this is that statistic we saw in a pie shape, 64% of our renters are cost burdened, meaning they're spending more than 30% of their income on their housing. Now, this owner occupied, this is actually what's been reported, 44% of people have really stretched, and they're spending more than 30%. Not unusual, many of us, if we own a home, maybe early on, we were stretching to try and get that mortgage as much as you can, with the expectation that your income was going to go up.
Phil, does that number, I'm assuming it doesn't include maintenance for those homeowners?
It includes your mortgage, your utilities, but not any kind of reserve fund for maintenance, no.
Question. That 44% that they stretched, what is, what does that mean? They stretched over that 30% of their income that they have to allocate for their mortgage and cost of?
Correct.
Property, and do we know what that number is? Do they stretch it to 45, 50, 60% of their income? What is that number?
I don't know, and I'm not necessarily sure it's stretching, somebody says, "Look, I just want to buy a house, and I'll do whatever." And maybe their parents helped them, but they're paying more in their costs than 30%. Again, when I said stretching, I was referring to myself, for instance. I stretch and I go beyond because I was younger and I had time to make more income, and to a point where it would be affordable.
And based on Glenda's median income, what is that 30% threshold that the resident in Glenda should be? Is it, our median income is $50,000, $51,000?
Yeah, $51,000, so 30% would be for housing.
So it's like $15,000, $16,000 about a year?
Yeah, somewhere about $1,200, $1,300 a month.
The mortgage with their taxes and everything else has to be about $1,200, $1,300, $1,500 max, to fall under that 30% threshold based on Glenda's median income?
Correct.
So, $1,500 a month to own a property, that's where we're going. I mean, that's what the report is indicating, that's why they say?
The report is saying, if you're paying more, if our median income is paying more than $1,500 a month, they fall into this category of cost burden. They may be paying more than that, and if they are, then they're in this cost burden. But they may have the house, and they're paying more than that.
I think that number should be 94%, that's the way that only 44% are paying that. Anyways, thank you, let's continue.
So these are our main takeaways from the data. What does all that mean? Glendale certainly is not unique in this situation, we saw other cities, we're going to compare them in future slides that you'll see. The housing in Glendale, both the ownership and rental, is not necessarily affordable under our current conditions. That's probably because our incomes aren't keeping up with the rising housing costs. The distribution, as you saw in that one figure, is way out of whack, and so we don't, it's not consistent with the distribution of our incomes. The demand to live in Glendale is creating pressure on our existing housing stock, and we, California, let alone Glendale, just can't build housing fast enough. The last? The last thing that I think is important to understand is, as housing turns over, people that are in this situation, residents of Glendale, for the most part, are not going to be able to afford to purchase that home. So you will have somebody from outside of Glendale bringing bigger incomes in and buy that home. And I, in my briefings with you over the last couple of weeks, myself, I don't know that I could afford the house that I live in today because of the appreciation. The appreciation has outpaced my income. I don't think my parents could live in the house that they do, and so on. But this is going to be a big issue for us as we start to see that demographic. We saw earlier, and people that are 75-plus, whatever the case may be, wherever they move to, whether it's a smaller unit or they move on, and that house turns over, we're going to have a difficult time replacing that with Glendale residents. The legislative response has been varied, and we would like to spearhead some of that that's in our middle here. But LA County is proposing a millionaire's tax, so everybody that makes a million-plus dollars would be taxed, and that would go to an affordable housing fund. The county will require special legislation from the state to increase their taxing authority, so that is still pending. LA County has a homeless initiative plan, 47 strategies. A lot of them are things that we're already doing on a smaller basis, because we're a city of 200,000. But the county has got that plan.
Phil, for those two pieces of legislation, the LA County two proposals, how would that work in terms of Glendale's share? Would it be need-based, or would it be proportional to the size of your city?
I don't know that they have figured that out yet. They're still trying to figure out, how do we get the authority to do this?
But the assumption is, if they were to put something into place, which I know they're working very hard, and it's sort of a moving target right now, but that Glendale would receive a share of, some share of those revenues to be able to help deal with homelessness and housing in our city as well?
On the homelessness front, a lot of that is going to be funds that we can apply for and collaborate with LA City on a regional basis. But in terms of a line item for Glendale-
No, no, I wasn't talking about that. I'm just saying that there would be some amount of that, because it's countywide, that would flow to this city and that we could use with homelessness. And ostensibly, I would assume it's also to keep people in their current homes and apartments.
Some of it, yes.
AB 2734 was a proposal that was floated out there to have the Department of Finance calculate the savings to the state through the elimination of redevelopment, and then kick back half of that to the cities to build affordable housing. That was defeated, actually, it passed, I believe the governor vetoed it last year. AB 2817, you've heard about this, it's an increase in tax credits, available tax credits, the same credits that we were talking about earlier today. That adds about $300 million to that. SB 873 is a bit of a twist on the tax credit program. Right now, you have to sell your tax credits to a partnership. It's got to be formed, and that's where you sell your tax credits. This would allow you to sell them to an unrelated group. Generally speaking, it should make it easier and more competitive to market those tax credits, making them worth more. That's the bottom line. AB 1618 is $2 billion in the state to attract, to attack homelessness and put those people, that's not the right term, put people into permanent housing and provide services to go along with that. And then finally, this is the big one that we're all keeping our eye on. The governor has an idea, it's called "Buy Right Housing Proposal." That would allow you for, in exchange for putting 10% of the units to low income or 5% to very low income, you would be able to bypass really local regulation and be able to build whatever's allowed by code. So there would be no more design review, there would be no environmental review. Cities would simply have to accept those projects, if it's zoned for such, and if it's in an area close to a transit district.
Quick question before. So you won't get any bonus density? It's just, if 10% of your project is, or 5% is very affordable, 10% is affordable. Is it the same density, or the same number of units, or will you get a bonus density as well?
I believe on this, it's the same density. This is still being negotiated now.
Right, so it's only you bypass the local municipalities on design review?
Right. Now, there are some other provisions, that if you build close to a transit hub and you provide X number, I think it's 30% affordable housing, you get a break on parking. This is a little bit different, and it's still being negotiated now. So it isn't all flushed out. But the idea is to bypass that and quickly get the housing built. The carrot that the governor has put out is $400 million. That has been appropriated, but it's being held pending this negotiation. It's one-time money, and we don't know how it'd be distributed across the state. But being very conservative, we think that builds anywhere between $3,500 and $7,000 units statewide.
For the entire state.
For the entire state. We just talked about our need. And so I, your staff would tell you that that's not a fair trade, and we have opposed this bill. Since April, there's been some developments in rent control. I still think that it has all of those same characteristics that we talked about before. It doesn't necessarily make housing affordable. In the city of Alameda, they were in a moratorium when we came to you in April. They have since adopted a program. It limits the increase once every 12 months. You can't increase it more than 5%. If you do, you're subject to mediation and binding arbitration. That is part of the program. It requires relocation assistance for no cause evictions. Alameda is right now conducting a fee study to try and figure out how much they need to charge to implement this program. Santa Rosa is where Alameda was.
Who do they charge?
They would most likely charge the multifamily owner.
Property owners, okay.
Property owner. The city of Santa Rosa is where Alameda was. They're in a 45-day moratorium on any increases more than 3%. They're studying this program and seeing, do we want to implement it or not? Interestingly, Richmond, we had reported to you that they adopted an ordinance, a rent control ordinance. There was a threatened referendum, and so the council voluntarily pulled it back. That was countered with an initiative to put it on the ballot that has been submitted for the November 16 ballot. So Richmond is going back and forth on this issue.
City of Richmond had a threat of referendum?
They threatened, the property owners had threatened a referendum of the ordinance. And that's when the council said, "Okay, it doesn't look like there's a support. Let's pull it back." Well, then, an initiative was put forward, and it's qualified for the ballot.
And this is Richmond, California?
Richmond, California. Mountain View, San Mateo, and Burlingame are all in that position that Richmond was. They're exploring. They've got petitions launched and trying to get the number of ballots, number of signatures to qualify for the ballot. Mr. Garpetti, you had asked for some-
Can I ask you a question? Those cities, those are all in the Bay Area, right?
They are.
And their housing issues are a little different than ours.
They are. They're, generally speaking, Richmond, take them out of the equation, but generally speaking, more affluent, higher rents, higher incomes, and it really, they don't mirror Glendale.
They've also built less housing, as far as I know, than the county of Los Angeles in this region.
And they're probably feeling the squeeze even more so.
And I was in San Francisco last week, and my friend is renting a three-bedroom apartment, and they pay almost $6,000 a month. That's average, FYI.
Do they have the Bay views?
That's just the average rent in San Francisco, you know? It's not a spectacular apartment. That's just your average apartment.
We talked about the city of Los Angeles last time. In 1978, they adopted a rent stabilization ordinance, that is rent control. There are 640,000 units that are subject to that. That is, they were built before 1995. Mr. Garpetti, and you had asked, what's the total number? Just under a million units. Between 2000 and 2007, about 20,000 of those units came off for different reasons. Owner-occupied, they were turned into other types of units development. And according to a self-evaluation report they did some six, seven years ago, in 2009, all the rent increases had been issued. So they went back and they looked at their program and said, "Okay, what are our findings?" What they found was, while tenants were protected from these big swings in rent, they got them more frequently. They got them, every chance that landlord had to raise the rent, they did. But they weren't those big, "I haven't raised the rent for 10 years, so now I'm going to bump it by 30%."
And Phil, do you know, then, in the long term, if you had a graph, where their rents were compared to the ones that didn't have the rent control?
I don't, but we'll show you something for the whole city. What they found was, and this is along the lines of what we talked about last week, it didn't address the scarcity of housing or the affordability of housing. So people that were living in the units, they didn't feel they were any more affordable than they were before. Again, little savings in the short term. You need to be in rent control for a long period of time and allow your income to grow before you feel that real benefit to where it becomes affordable. There were administrative burdens that were placed on owners, and the smaller the owner, the more difficult it was. The ability to, and this is what everybody talks about, to achieve a balance of rent stabilization and a reasonable rate of return was very difficult. They found that the small owners were the least profitable. They were the least equipped to deal with the program. And they also had a larger portion of what they depended on, their income, lost by those that were in the units that did stay a long time. They weren't able to raise them. We also found, and some of this is a little bit conflicting, but we found, they found, that the difference between the rent stabilization units and non-units was anywhere between $0 and $500 a month. The rents, if the rents increased every year, they were unlikely to be more than 35% less than market rate, so that gap was 35 or less. 70% of the owners said, "I didn't get a reasonable rate of return." And the rate of return, because it is reasonable rate, depends on when you bought it. It was all over the place in Los Angeles. So we wanted to look at the change, and while I don't have them rent stabilization units versus non, what we did here is graph the, these diamonds represent the percentage that rent went up from 1980 to 2014. So in the city of Los Angeles, they went up somewhere about 60%. Glendale was 54. State of California was about 48. Close by to us, West Hollywood, they were right around 48, 45. Their rent, though, went up to, in West Hollywood, went up to $1,300, almost $1,400. Still less than that. And you see Glendale right here with the state of California, our rents have changed, gone up, about the same as the state of California. Some of these, Beverly Hills, San Francisco, Santa Monica, big swings, rent control, but they had big swings. It's interesting to say, and maybe if you're in statistics, help you make a point, this is probably a different environment, much like you had suggested Northern California was. But it still tells you that rent control didn't necessarily keep the rent down or make it affordable.
I have a quick question before we move on. You go back one slide? Yeah, here. So these are the current numbers?
This is as of 2014.
The 2014 numbers. Average rent in Los Gallos is $1,700?
The median rent was, according to the census, was $1,700. So half the rents were above that.
Santa Monica is $1,500?
I'm sorry?
Santa Monica, $1,500. San Francisco, $1,533. That's the median rent?
Median rent. According to what people reported in the census.
Okay, thank you.
But what that probably doesn't show, given that it's median, is that the rent-controlled apartments could be much lower, and the market rate could be much higher, so you get this very wide swing with nothing in the middle.
They could be, although, and again, we can dig down deeper if you want. This is, the city of Los Angeles, we know, is about 65%. Two-thirds is rent-controlled. So that's got to have some influence on what's happening here, unless you've got a big boom of high-end apartments, you know, from 2010 to 2014. But I'm not sure that that would get captured in this.
No, my point is just that, in a city that has a lot of rent-controlled apartments, or a city like San Francisco, a rent-controlled apartment that someone's had a long time could be $600 a month. But I would challenge anybody to go to San Francisco and find an apartment for $1,500. So you've got these big swings, where you've got, the rest, the ones that aren't rent-controlled are the $5,000 a month apartments, and then the rent-controlled ones are $700. And that's not captured, that kind of, those extremes are not captured by this graph, but those extremes are very important in terms of telling the story of what housing costs really are for people.
One other question. The median income means, if it's $1,500, the median rent in, let's say, West Hollywood is $1,389, does that mean that half the rents in that city are below $1,389, and the other half are above $1,389? It doesn't tell you the one above is $1,000, $1,400, or $4,000. It just tells you, there's a line they draw, it's $1,400, half the rents are below that, half, it's not the average rent.
Correct.
It's just that half the renters pay less than $1,400, the other half pay more than $1,400.
Yes.
It's not an average rent, it's a median rent.
Right.
So I wanted to get the clarification, because that makes a huge difference.
It does, and we're looking at trends. And so we used median because that's where, that's what the census would do, so we could compare apples to apples. And we're looking at trends. You could make the claim, well, that doesn't tell you that all those units are at, those half that are above 13 are at $2,000. You could also look at average and say, "Well, you get one that's $1 million," and skews the whole average. So what we're doing is, we're trying to use something that we can compare from city to city, and then show you trends. And there's certainly nuance and detail as you dig deeper in all of them. There were some questions related to our just cause eviction. The first was, can a municipality enact an ordinance? Can you stretch out that notice? Right now, state law is 60 days if you're above 10%. And the question was, could we extend that to 90 days, 120 days, 180 days? The answer is no, and if you want some elaboration, I'll ask Mr. Garcia. But it's part of the government code that prescribes that. So it does not allow us to preempt that. So the answer to that question is no. There was a second question that was asked. Could we impose a relocation fee when rent was raised, let's say, 10% or more, and the tenant elected not to stay and pay that higher rent? The answer there is maybe. We've not, you certainly can impose a rent if there's an eviction. And we have those listed, the different terms from our just cause eviction. The twist here was that it would be the tenant that is deciding, not the owner. So we still think that you have the ability to do that. It hasn't been done before, so it's certainly subject to challenge, but we think there's an argument to be made for it. What we would recommend, though, is that we only make that applicable to units built before 1995. That is, those that would be subject, that could be subject to rent control. Because by imposing that fee, you could, in a sense, be controlling somebody's rent. And those units built after 95 are precluded from that.
Sorry, Rich, you were talking about the item two?
I'm going to let Mr. Garcia explain to you, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So just to address this particular issue, and I can address the first issue that Mr. Landfame addressed- Lanzefame addressed as well, if council desires. As Phil said, it's a relatively novel, unique concept, so it's hard for us to opine definitively that, yes, we can do this. Generally, the right to impose a relocation requirement or relocation obligation is certainly within the city's police powers. The issue is, though, that for buildings that are constructed, units that are constructed after February 1, 1995, those that have their certificate of occupancy after that date, the law states that cities cannot impose a requirement that restricts the ability of landlord to set the initial rent rate for those units and all subsequent rates. So the question becomes then, well, if we're imposing a requirement for something that a landlord is statually authorized to do and has the right to do without governmental restriction, would a relocation requirement impede that? An answer, I don't know, because it's just, it really, it just hasn't been addressed before. Nobody has tried to do that. So, and I concur with Mr. Lanzefame's comment, if you're inclined to do this, then we'd recommend that you do it on all pre-February 1, 1995 buildings. The only other thing I'd add to that, too, is if you directed us to bring that back, we'd probably be discussing some of the pros and cons of that, in the sense of unintended consequences and enforceability difficulties that you might have with it, and happy to address that as the council desires.
And if I can ask, how can you define, or how do you define tenant determines increase to be unaffordable? I just say I...
It's just, yeah, and that's actually one of the issues, I think, the unintended consequences, enforceability issues that we have with that.
Wow.
But essentially, it would be structured in a way, as I understand it, that essentially, upon notice, that the rent is going to be increased by the number that the council sets, say, for example, 10%. It's basically a voluntary decision at that point of the tenant to move, stating in a self-declaration that I can't, I need to move because this rent increases too much, and at that point, the landlord will have the obligation. Again, I'm not sure how workable it is and what enforcement issues we might have, but legally, we think you can do it, especially as it relates to pre-95 buildings.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last question that was asked, could the city impose an inspection on those units that received a rent increase by more than 10%? The answer is yes. You'd probably want to do that on all units, and you would need to generate a revenue funding source. I would tell you that your current staff could not take that responsibility on. So we didn't need to generate a revenue funding source to then hire staff to do that.
But again, for buildings after 1995?
On that one, you probably wouldn't have that restriction.
Right, you could do that across the board. And just to...
Now, why not?
Why not what?
Why not not do it for buildings after 1995? If you don't restrict the rent that way?
In essence, yeah, it's not a, it's not a, I wouldn't view it as the same type of restriction on the right to increase the rent. And again, because public agencies have the right to require that rental units be inspected, I think the council could establish a policy where they have to be inspected under certain conditions, one of those conditions being a rent increase, for example, above 10%. And I think Mr. Lanzefame mentioned this, but I just, I want to emphasize it and reiterate that the condition that you get an inspection before increasing it, that would, of course, be subject to all Fourth Amendment requirements, so landlord would either have to consent or we'd have to go and get an inspection warrant in the event that landlord didn't consent. So it's just, you know, 10% rent increase, and then we show up at the door, we're ready to do inspection, it wouldn't work that way. You'd have to go through all those procedures to impose such a requirement.
So, again, with the objective of trying to house our Glendale residents affordably, we have developed an eight-point plan that are some ideas, we're looking for your feedback, and then we can go develop them further, if you're interested. Development impact fee on, for affordable housing, so new construction comes in, we impose a fee, we use those fees to then create new affordable housing. There are cities that have done this, it would require a nexus study, and we would have to make that connection. An inclusionary zoning ordinance, we could do this on all new housing, that is ownership. You could require that they build a percentage that is affordable to, you can name the different level. You cannot do it for rent ownership, and this goes back to our friend Costa Hawkins, you can't impose a rent control on a project built after 1995. The case, I believe, is Palmer that you'll hear about, that kind of made that decision and forced all of us to rethink this. We have inclusionary zoning only in the San Fernando Road corridor, and that is a result of a requirement through redevelopment. At the time, the redevelopment agency formed that project area, that was a requirement of the redevelopment law. We adopted it as an ordinance, so new ownership housing in the corridor has to provide that inclusionary zoning. You could open that up citywide or do whatever parts you want. We would suggest continuing our affordable housing efforts in development. Certainly, people were here today, we're already starting to think of anticipating you want to keep going and thinking of a next project. Section 8, I think, I hope you all heard, Mr. Zovak was able to procure 15 new VAS vouchers, so those are Section 8 vouchers, for veterans. We would continue to look for ways to enhance our Section 8 program. And then our density bonus program, we will continue to develop units through that. This is probably the place that I think we need to spend a lot of time, is in legislation to replace the affordable housing funding stream that was eliminated with redevelopment. I know that Speaker Emeritus Atkins from San Diego is pushing very hard for new legislation, and so it would be staff's desire to get on board with them, and we'd very, very much like to have one of you along with us representing Glendale and make sure that that policy is developed to the benefit of Glendale. Workforce housing zones, we may have touched on this a little bit in the South Glendale Community Plan. Find areas where we can provide incentives for people to include workforce housing. And that, when I say workforce housing, I mean that, that's just above moderate, but that doesn't make enough money to afford Glendale's housing. So the teacher, the nurse, the entry-level firefighter, those people, I used the term again, I apologize, I don't mean those people, but people in those, that demographic, they deserve to live affordably in town, and so we'd like to find ways to do that. An idea that's a little bit outside our box, but we wanted to put it out there, an affordable housing bond. We think with something, it's a relative term, modest, but modest, if you were to impose a tax of $100 per housing unit, $2 per rental unit, a nickel for every non-residential or commercial, you could probably raise about $6 million, which might support a $50 to $60 million bond. You could take those proceeds then and turn it in, leverage them however you wanted, but turn it into affordable housing. We would have a target of somewhere around 1,200 units that we would like to construct out of a bond and split those up between rental and ownership. Get a lot of bang for your buck, but as you saw, we would like to try and address that ownership issue in some way, and so we have something for everybody. Promote greater density where our infrastructure can support it, and I would emphasize that and keep it in mind for the South Glendale Community Plan discussion tonight, only in those areas where there's transit, where there's already existing recreation space, where the streets are wide enough. But it might be that we allow additional FAR or additional densities, floor area ratio or densities, to build something bigger in exchange for affordable units. And then finally, I would put in this, kind of those issues of the just cause eviction that you want us to look at, a business registration fee if you wanted to impose an inspection program. We failed to put on here, because it didn't fall in any one of these categories, but also like your feedback if you want us to go look at that relocation issue for rents above a certain threshold. That concludes my presentation, and so staff is here. I would just like to take a second to thank Cipan Zadorian and Will Provost, who did a lot of the research on this, Peter Zovak did a lot of the preparation of the report, a lot of work went into it, and it's been very useful for me in trying to think, how do we start to attack this issue? So wanted to thank them and acknowledge them to you.
I have a question. So for cities, those cities that are starting to initiate rent control, how does it work then? Do they, do they, while they're preparing their ordinance, do, are the landlords able to raise their rents? I mean, do they try to put a moratorium on the raising of rents while they're looking at that, and is it unlimited to where people can raise their rent to whatever they want, and then they're put under rent control?
It's my understanding that a whole bunch of different things can happen. You could put a moratorium on, you could let home, property owners increase the rent, and then when you adopt the ordinance, you go back 12 months to what rent was 12 months ago, or 24 months, or some period of time, in, I forgot what city it was, but they adopted a moratorium on rent increases above 3% while they went through that study, so there's different ways.
And there's no median, so, I mean, there's no median requirement, so it's not like you say, okay, every one-bedroom of a certain square footage is X rent. So that means if someone just didn't raise their rent for a long time and their rent's under market, they have to stay there, whereas someone else who's already raised their rent, they kind of get to stay there?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to know how it was done. Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lanzefame, for that report, and to staff for compiling it. It does give us a different perspective on what's going on, not only in our city, but regionally and statewide, and probably all across the country. I do have several cards, I have approximately 20 cards, all of them, people may not be here, I noticed some have been leaving. So I think we'll listen to, let the people speak first, if that's okay, and I was going to give everyone two minutes, but we do have council at 6:00, so I'm going to cut that down to one minute per speaker. That's okay, Mr. Kusakian, and one minute per speaker, and please, I ask you, let's try to avoid repetitiveness. I know all of you, a lot of you are here for the same reason, so if you hear the speaker before you say what you were going to say, just maybe say ditto, or, that's exactly what I meant, just for the, to save time. I want all of you to have the opportunity to speak, and I hope that you will. So we shall begin with one minute. Margaret Hammond, we'll start with you. Followed by Hilda Albers.
After Margaret Hammond.
My name is Margaret Hammond. Good afternoon, good evening, we may be here all day. I'm coming back. Anyway, I have owned rental property in Glendale since 1960. I came here, wanted to live, we want, we love Glendale, it was called Chicken Soup City when I came, due to the fact there were a lot of seniors that lived in their little old homes down in South Glendale, before it was all rezoned and with all those apartments that were slammed in without enough parking. Anyway, those of us who paid attention decades ago realized we could not rely on the government to provide secure retirement after a lifetime of paying the government for Social Security. We made multifamily investments in Glendale to create a better life for my family and also the residents, renters. We need to be encouraging more investments like this in Glendale. That's one minute? Well, then I didn't get my finger crossed. But you know, rent control, in Santa Monica, the rental has gone down, the rental units have gone down, not up, from rental control.
Thank you. Hilda, followed by Everett Milner. Miss Milner?
How many speakers do we have?
Twenty. Twenty.
Good evening, I'm Hilda Albers. I own, bought two properties, one in '75, one in 1976, nearby, and I helped Howard Jarvis with the proposition 13, because it did help me. At that time, I could not pay the property tax, it paid out of our own pocket. So, anyway, I think we should keep the rents under the current price, so in favor to the tenants, so they stay. My tenants stay up to 25 years. I have long-term tenants. I'm not like those other people, I do investments, keep the building up, replumbing tiles in the kitchens, new stoves, every, not secondhand, everything has to be good, that's what I'm doing. So now you know.
Your tenants are lucky.
Everett, Missner?
John Schering.
My name is Everett Milner. I am part of a family operation that we live on the properties here in Glendale, as well as have a duplex in Los Angeles, under rent control. Do not financially handcuff us based upon providing a private class of citizens in Glendale protected unfairly by rent control. They are being raised here, and people are immigrating into Glendale, which is wonderful. That's not the landlord's fault that there is not enough housing to share for everybody. I would love to be the homeowner across the street from me that's been there for 30 years, that bought the house for less than $25,000, and now has found out it's worth over $600,000 for just living there. As a landlord, I am working on my properties day in and day out, and do not see that same return. Do not hobble us by creating administrative fees and artificially setting rent levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. For the sake of time, let's hold back the applause, followed by R.J. Stroats. John?
Yes, hello, city council members. Thank you for the report and the opportunity to talk today. Some of the other speakers have very well summarized my...
Name?
I'm sorry, John Schunning. And they have very well summarized some of the points I wanted to make, so I would just add sort of my personal experience here, is that my family has been in the housing-providing business in Glendale since 1956, uninterrupted, and that entire time, we have never charged market rates. We have always been below market rates because we believed in creating a very good tenant-provisor relationship, fostering community, and encouraging people to stay in Glendale, in the community, put their roots down, and it just makes for a better living environment. Our average tenancy is eight to 10 years, I would say, some have been there 20 years, one has been there 33. So the point I wanted to make is that there's a lot of people in the room here today, as well as in the community, who are housing providers in Glendale, that are not obsessed with squeezing every cent out of their investment, getting the highest cap rate, getting the highest return on investment. We're here to provide a decent environment for the citizens of this city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. R.J. Stroats, followed by Vladimir Bellis.
Yes, I guess it's evening now, so I'll greet everybody by saying good evening. My name is R.J. Stroats, and I own an apartment building on Kenyatta Boulevard, north of the community college, and I've owned it since '05. Before that, my family owned the multi-residential building. It was constructed in 1950, and over time, my family has had to do upgrades, which probably don't qualify for capital improvements, but we've kept the rents very reasonable. My tenants also stay a very long time. They take care of my property, because that's their home, and I urge the city council not to impose rent control. And as Mr., is it Lanzefame? Yes, as Mr. Lanzefame's report indicated, rent control does not aid with regard to the scarcity of housing units, nor in terms of affordability. So I think the status quo is perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Vladimir, followed by Ramona Karas.
Madam Mayor, city council, my name is Vladimir Bellis. I own properties since 1972. I own properties since 1972. In all those years, very few tenants have moved out. 15, 20, I had one 35 years lived in there. Rent control will not do you any good, it will do not us any good. The only one that's going to benefit would be people you hire, inspectors, administrators, this and that. I had the same thing in Los Angeles, I had to get out there. So, please don't come out with the rent control. The units I bought, I bought them, I lived in it, that was my first home, still own them, rent's way below the market. I have tenants that if I raise it 25, $20, they can't pay it, they are maxed. So, please don't do it. Leave it, if it's not broken, don't fix it, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ramona, followed by Gerard Rogalian?
Hi, my name is Gerard Rogalian. I've been a landlord in Glendale for almost 10 years. I have 12-unit apartment. I live in Glendale for more than 17, and I own a business more than 28 years in Glendale. In my opinion, rent control will temporarily hold the rents in the short run, however, then after, whenever a landlord will have a vacancy, he or she will not going to rent it at the current rate. They will be demanding the future rent value. In other words, what that apartment could rent five years from today, but they're going to ask it from now, as a preemptive head start, because the rent will be locked in, he will be locked in for the rent for the next five or 10 years. Now, today, let's say a landlord is asking for, had a one-bedroom going for $900, he's asking $1,200, and some of the tenants, they think it's exorbitant. Why don't we look at, I want the city council to look at the rent being charged by the new residential buildings that are being built, the new ones. A studio is going for $1,900. A one-bedroom is going for $2,400. And these people got from the design board 20% more rental, I mean, more building, to allocate it to low income. Where are these low income? We have 5,000 apartments that are being built by these big moguls, okay, in Glendale, on Central, on wherever. And they built sixth floor, the sixth floor was given them by the design board, provided they gave 20%. That means that where are the 1,000 units, out of the 5,000, where are the 1,000 units that are supposed to go to for low income?
Thank you.
I want you guys to look for it, and to look at those rents that they are being charged exorbitantly.
Thank you.
$2,000 for a studio.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are the Karas, are the Karas here, Ramona and Ken, did they leave? Okay. Roseanne, Kalea, oh no, I'm sorry, Kalaba. Kalaba, followed by Michael Shear. Yes, yes, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Roseanne Kalaba. My husband and I bought a unit way back in the early '70s. We were a young couple, we had family, we bought the unit. I'm just trying to tell you, one of the experiences we had with one of our tenants, our people had been there a very, very long time. We both, my husband and I, were working. We had to work paychecks in jobs to pay for the units. One of my, experienced with one of my girls, she was there many years, a single girl. A few years ago, she had enough money in her pocket, she bought her own home. And she wrote a beautiful, beautiful letter to us. She hated to go, but she was so happy she could afford her own building, her own house, her own thing. I mean, how, a young girl! And we've had many, many tenants, couples, who have moved. We don't raise the rent, we have long-term tenants. And this is something, we are very considerate of everybody, and we have been for many years. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael, Michael Shear, followed by Sala Bitola.
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Sharr. I have had a property management business in Glendale for 20-plus years. We currently manage for about 200 individual investors in Glendale and surrounding cities. Glendale is a beautiful city to live in, and it's a desirable place to invest. However, discussions of rent control can significantly change the attitudes of investors. By artificially reducing the return on investment in rental housing, rent control also reduces the quality of housing. When a provider is faced with declining revenues, owners are forced to substantially reduce maintenance of existing housing stock. I can assure you that in some of the properties under rent control that we manage, on more than one occasion, I've said I'd love to do the upgrade to that property, but it does not make economic sense. In the properties we manage in Glendale, we can often make those improvements to protect the tenants' homes as well as our investors. Ironically, as you previously discussed, state law prohibits rent control in buildings built after 1995. However, rent control targets older buildings which need the investment the most. I sincerely hope that you'll not institute any fees or price controls that make it harder for me to operate and produce quality housing that we can be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sala? Followed by Herbert Milano.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a broker, my name is Sala Betalahi. I'm an apartment broker with Marcus and Milichap, specialized in the acquisition, disposition, and financing of multifamily housing across LA County, specifically in Glendale. That's the main area of focus. And I wanted to give you just a little bit of perspective on some of our clients, myself personally. My family owns a small six-unit building. My dad's owned it since the late 1980s, and now he's older, he doesn't, he's not too active in it, so I've taken over, and our tenants have been there since before I was born. I did want to give you, I didn't want to repeat the same things as Michael, but I did want to give you a little perspective on some, how some owners view Glendale, and they do look at it as a safe haven for their capital. A lot of times, we'll see an owner sell a rent-controlled property specifically to get to an area like Glendale where there is no rent control. I think instituting rent mediation, rent stabilization, it does disincentivize the flow of capital to the city. A lot of times, when you are raising the rent by an exorbitant number, supply and demand just mandates that you do improve that unit. So, there does need to be an additional investment made before that can be achieved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Herbert Milano, followed by Chuck, Chuck Beetz.
We are divine members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. I'm currently the executive director for the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Many of the people that you see here today were encouraged to come by our organization. I want to say the following, that the crux of the problem that exists today is very similar to the one that we had in 2001, when some of the people present here were part of the board of the Glendale Apartment Association. The issue that we had back in 2001 was upon the sale of a building. In 2001, we had about 117 buildings sold that year. This year, so far, we have sold, only about 27 properties have been sold. The difference is in the gross rent multiplier. It is much more expensive now to buy in Glendale. Consequently, there is a need to, for these new investors to come in and jack up the rent significantly. But as you have seen from many of the people who talked here today, most of the landlords have kept the rents down for a very long time. And for the issue of fairness, you need to consider the fact that for most of the rents in Glendale, for most of the long-term owners, the rents have been low for a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Chuck Betts, is it? Followed by Ron Yora.
Yes, Chuck Betts. I've been in the rental housing industry for 48 years, in the free marketplace and under rent control. Rent control does not do its intended purpose, which is to preserve and create affordable housing. And it does the exact opposite. New York City has had rent control for over 73 years. It was enacted during the Second World War. They have the highest rents in the country, and they have the highest cost of living. Second place is San Francisco, second highest rents, second highest cost of living. The third is Santa Monica, with the third highest rents and cost of living. So, it does not preserve or create affordable housing. If you're going, if you're going to regulate, or you want to create affordable housing, first, you're going to have to regulate the cost of land, the cost of labor, the cost of materials. Because if you don't do those, then you're going to end up putting the owner out of business, because they can't exist unless they can make, recoup their money and pay their expenses. And Los Angeles, as was stated, had over a million units under rent control. It is now down to 600 and some units. So, Los Angeles has lost 40% of its affordable housing, which it'll never get back. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Yora, followed by Greg Astorian. Is Ron here? Greg Astorian, followed by Kathy McClure.
Madam Mayor, my name is Greg Astorian. I'm the president of Glendale Association of Realtors with 1,700 members. Can I get a minute for each?
No.
All right. So, then I'll keep it very brief. I will go to the chart that Phil Lanzaphame showed, that was the increases that was talked about between 1980 to today, to 2014, that's 35 years, that the increase has been at 54% as opposed to Los Angeles with rent control, that was at approximately 66%. If you were to take that 54% divided in 35, you will get an average rental rate increase of 1.6%. We are okay with your item number four, five, six, your recommendations. We're not okay with your inclusionary zoning, we're not okay with your development impact fee. And we will take the ballot measure with a grain of salt. We would much rather for this burden not to be put on landlords and property owners. And in fact, if there is a mechanism that you can find to spread the burden over everybody, because we're in this thing for all of us together, then it might be far more fair.
Thank you.
With that, there were another two pages, but we will conclude.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Kathy McClure?
Thank you. My name is Kathy McClure. I am the sitting chair of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. I want to state that the Chamber of Commerce is not in favor of rent control. The Glendale Chamber of Commerce directors respectfully request that you take no action until such time as you further engage stakeholders and members of the community, including apartment owners, realtors, residents, and business owners, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, and particularly the Glendale otter dealers. It is very important that you are looking at this closely, and that we further study and take, and look at what includes direct impacts economically. This could be a big economic problem for the city of Glendale. The framework of our economic is dependent on our businesses as well, and new businesses coming in. And I regretfully would, I would hate to see, and regret to see businesses subsequently leaving as well, particularly if one of your things that you're looking at would be impact fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Astorian, council member Garpetian has a question for you.
Would this eat through my time, or?
From that 1,700 minutes? Yeah.
30 seconds to answer his question. What's your question?
Our report indicates that the median average, median rent in Glendale is $1,300. Do you agree with that number?
For the median number, yes. Because median number is really a statistical phenomenon. Again, 50% over, 50% below. So, that's the best way that they can really look at rents. And I know exactly what your intentions are, and I get that.
So, you believe that 50% of the rents in Glendale are below $1,300?
According to the census, yes.
I know, according to the census. I'm not asking according to the census.
That's what I can address, because that's what has been presented to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Harvey Pearson, followed by Jeff Snead, followed by Ward Barata. As Mr. Pearson's coming up, the city manager has told me that that number also includes subsidized affordable housing. So, just keep that in mind, that's not, that's not all market rate.
Thank you.
Council members, I'm Harvey Pearson. I have a very good senior friend, she's lived in Glendale for about 40 years. She's moved three times because of rent increases, and so, she's afraid that she's going to run out of her annuity and not be able to pay the rent anymore in Glendale and have to move somewhere. That's the other side of the coin here. And the other measure that I haven't heard anybody mention is, is there any way to perhaps reduce, to slow, let's say, the population growth, which is equivalent to increasing demand, and handle the situation that way? Thank you.
Build a wall. No, I'm kidding. Sorry.
Ouch!
Jeff Snead?
Hi, my name is Jeff Snead. I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I manage my family's property in South Glendale. There was earlier discussion regarding the community in Glendale, the difference between North Glendale and South Glendale. I manage 64 units in South Glendale, and we previously owned buildings in Los Angeles adjacent to Glendale. We sold those buildings in Los Angeles because of the economics. We could not maintain the buildings. Our buildings that we purchased in the early 2000s in South Glendale have gentrified through our, tenants have better income, they have better jobs, and that's part of the redevelopment that we're seeing in Glendale. That's forcing prices to get up, but it's changing the community. You really have to look at where you want the community to go. And a good way to do that is to go down through South Glendale, go down to Andrita Street, where we used to own buildings, and drive through the rent control areas. And you will see, you're going to get different demographics, and you're going to get bars on all the windows, and it's, you have to keep up with the market rent. If you don't keep up with the market rent, you're going to go backwards in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Ward Barata, followed by Mike Mulhill, followed by Vic Mercari.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me the chance to speak. My name is Ward Barata, and I not only live in here in Glendale, but I also manage the Sleep Number store on Glendale Avenue in Lexington. I'm speaking here for, you know, not only my family, but a lot of the resident that I encounter every day coming to my store and talking to, you know, like, people from all ways of life, you know. Currently, and last month, actually, I've finally received my increased rent notice that, you know, for a two-bedroom apartment, I'm gaining almost, I'm paying almost $2,000. And my next-door building, they are renting two-bedroom apartment for $2,650. And I know, you know, by next year, it's going to probably, you know, like, increase for another, you know, $150 to $200, which will prompt me to, you know, like, move out of Glendale, although I live here in Glendale. I know a lot of people here are, you know, like, members of the Glendale community, but I don't see a lot of the residents. And I speak so many times for the residents that I know they're not here today, they're at work, you know, making ends meet. So, thank you for, thank you for giving me the chance.
Thank you. Mike Mulhill, followed by Vic Mercari.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mulhill. I'd like to ask the question, why are people asking for rent control? Why? Is it because the cost of living in Glendale is very high? Yep. And why is it very high? Because every time this city council, and previous city council, has raised the electric and the water rates, utilities of our city, you've passed it on to landlord. And he, in turn, passes it on to his renters, his tenants. Now, you've gone ahead and raised the rates beyond the cost of delivery. And why are those rates going up higher and higher? One simple reason, to pay for the 800 city employees who earn between $100 and over $300,000 a year, plus a pension of that great magnitude. That's where all the money's going, folks in the viewing audience. It isn't that the rents go up, it's that the utilities keep going up. Until they stop raising the utility rates, landlords can afford to stay in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. See here? Vic Mercari in here? Okay, that concludes the speaker cards for this item. So, I would ask the four comments from council and housing authority members, who would like to start?
Well, first, I'd like to thank everyone for being here. We always hear, personally, I hear from the residents every week, every week, in these chambers, in our office, that they complain.
And it's good to hear from the other side as well, from the landlords who are, who have a conscience, who have heart. They don't come in and raise the rent by five, six, $700 in 60 days. So it's, I really appreciate all of you being here. My goal is to find the balance between all of this. The gentleman hit it on the head when he said, all those units going up, the rents are $3,000 for one bedroom, I can pay, I can, I can charge $1,500 or $2,000 for my one bedroom. So all these times that we were talking about a new development is going to have an effect on the rents on the, on the older developments, it's, it's coming, and it's going to get worse until it gets better, because market will correct itself. I mean, supply and demand, we talk about the growth of the community or the population growth. Look, I have three children. One of them is 18 already. So in two, three, four years, she would need an apartment or a unit all by herself. So it's not that a lot of people are moving in and trying to occupy these older units. Families are growing, their children are growing, they would need, the same thing with our traffic, some of the cars on the streets, because my daughter is driving now. Instead of two cars, we have three cars. So the growth is going to be there. As far as rent control or rent stabilization, I think we had a meeting with the Property Owners Association leadership, and we spoke about few items that I didn't see here, maybe I missed it. But I think if we can create an environment that the tenants would know where their rents are going to be in a year, two years, I think that would, that would calm everybody down. Because right now, today, I had a lady, her rent was $950 for a one-bedroom, they increased it to $1,450. And there is no way anybody in the world can, can adjust to it when you are in the lower end of that, that income. They can't adjust to it in 60 days. That's why we wanted to see if we can increase it and notice instead of 60 days to, to make it 120 days, so it would give people a little bit more time to find another place or, or adjust to that increase. But we cannot do that either. Rent control in LA, this is for the renters. My understanding was it was up to units built until 1978. After 78, there is no rent control. Is that correct, or I'm, or it's 95?
95, they adopted their ordinance in 1978. They implemented rent control in 1978. The law went into effect in 95, so any unit after 95.
So all units. And the single-family homes, they don't, they don't fall under rent control, and condominiums, they don't fall under rent control in the city of LA.
And a state law too, you can't require rent control.
Right. So, and I hear about the older units, when there are rent controls and they don't take care of it, and it gets deteriorated. Again, our goal is to find the balance between rents going up, and some of the people who bought those units, $350,000 a door, they come in and buy these units because, as the chairman indicated, Glendale is a good market, they sell their properties in rent control area and come in and purchasing Glendale because Glendale has no rent control. That, that just turns your life upside down if your rent goes up by five, $600, by 30%, 40%. That's, that's a problem. Everybody, every renter in this town that I talk to, they understand rents are going up everywhere. Even in the city of LA that has rent control, last year it went up 6.1% versus Glendale 4.3%. They know rents are going up, they don't have an issue with, with rents going up, but they have an issue with, how much is it going up? Is, as a landlord, do you think 30%, 40% rent increase is fair or not at one point? You give a notice to somebody and say, 60 days later, your rent is $500 more than what you're paying today. I don't think it's fair. That's why we're trying to find a solution for the problem we have, because I hear about it every single day, believe me. Your tenants are lucky, because you have heart, you, you just run your property as a business, as a, as a, as a good business person. You keep your, you maintain your property and your rents are to the par. But we have so many cases that that's not the case. So many cases that that's not the case. They come and say predatory rent increase, and that's, that's a huge issue for Glendale. As far as median rent in Glendale, I don't know the census report. I, I don't believe that 50% of the rents in Glendale are below $1,300. I don't know, I may be wrong, and that won't be the first time, but I, I don't believe the rents are less than, 50% of the rents in Glendale are less than $1,300. Every one-bedroom is, right now, is $1,300 to $1,500. So as far as the population, the segment of the population that are seniors and they are in a desperate need of affordable housing, guess what? The baby boomers in 10 years, they're going to increase to that population. It's not going to go away. It's not that there's seniors are going to go away and, and we won't have any. The baby boomers are, 30%, 40% of our population is over, over 50 or 55 years old. It's going to increase to this problem. So we have to address this issue, one way or the other. I know it's a tough issue, I know it's property rights, nobody's been more outspoken about property rights than me. I'm, I'm in real estate business, and it was good to see so many, so many of my friends here. But this is an issue that is affecting the entire community, and it has to be addressed. I'm going to stop here, Madam Mayor, and here.
Madam Mayor and Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the group, one of the things, the purpose of this afternoon was to present all the information that you all had asked for last time. Mr. Sinanian had asked that this item come back in the evening, but we also wanted to make sure we brought it back forthwith. So to the extent that Mr. Garpetian is alluding to a suggestion from the Apartment Owners Association, not part of this report, because it wasn't something generated from the staff, what we can do is bring this back as intended on the 20, on the 16th of August, with whatever direction you might give us right now about items that are fair game or off limits in the interest of time, so that we can move to the evening session after you take a break, and then we'll be here on the 16th with some of the items that are on this list, some of the items that were referenced already.
Okay, so that we can, so that we can quickly, one at a time, go through perhaps staff recommendations, the eight steps, if we have direction for you on those eight steps?
If you would like us, we can further flush those eight out and not even have to make a decision tonight about them. You've heard from residents or speakers that some things are fair game, some things are not. But if, if you all are comfortable with just amplifying what those items are without approving any of them, we can bring those back. And also, if you want us to further walk down the road on rate stabilization or rent stabilization, rent control, you can tell us that or not. If you want us to further flush out, as the city attorney had indicated, some of the details on the relocation and on the inspection program, as well as the advance notice of future rent increases, as was intimated from the Apartment Owners Association.
Well, I'll kind of speak for myself on this first, and then I'll, I'll open it up for, for the rest of, of Council. I think the bottom line with this whole issue is the fact that we are lacking affordable housing. And rent control, I don't feel is the answer. So I would like to see you, I would like to see staff delve into the eight steps that you have come up with, and if, and if you feel there are any new ideas that were mentioned this evening or this afternoon, whatever, what time is it, 6 o'clock? Bring those back. Does Council have any other suggestions?
My idea to bring this issue back during the regular council session in the evening was to afford that opportunity to those people that are working, making ends meet. Mr. Barada, I think you said that, and that's exactly my consideration, to make sure that people, I mean, we have an overwhelming majority of property owners here, which is great. We want to hear their side, but also, I wanted to make sure that the renters had the opportunity to be here and express their concerns. So to that extent, I think this, you know, we have the information from Council, we heard what these options are, but in terms of starting narrowing down what sort of our favorite options are, at this point, it's pretty mature.
Councilwoman Friedman?
I'll just make a few comments, not even so much about any of the specific alternatives from staff. This is a very complicated issue, and it, there's a lot of aspects that go into housing costs. There are regional differences, there are timing differences, there are historic patterns, there's growth that goes into it. It's complicated. And this was a very good, kind of very high-level PowerPoint view, but to try to make policy based on that without really delving into all of those issues, I think would be a mistake. And I think this needs to be a long conversation, not just to get stakeholders' views, but so that the Council, myself included, really understands all of these issues. And I'll just tell you, for instance, that there's a lot of things that we heard that are contradictory from people. So I think that there's a, you know, a lot of these areas that we really need to look into, and I'll just go over a few of them. First of all, I'll say that I think Mr., that Harvey Pearson, to me, really hit the nail on the head about what I think is the real big elephant in the room, not just in Glendale, but in Los Angeles County and probably even this whole state, which is population growth, which is a huge, huge challenge, and something that we as a city can never begin to address in any way. Because people want to live in areas that have jobs, right? We want jobs in our community. People want to live in cities that are safe, and we want to be safe. People are living longer, people are having children that are surviving. Those are all good things, but they all add to the, to the equation when it comes to housing costs. And we see that not in areas that have rent control and in areas that don't. San Francisco is a very desirable place to live, and it's near very active job centers with Silicon Valley. So it's very, it's a place that has rent control and has very high rents. Santa Barbara is a great place to live. I would love to live in Santa Barbara. They don't have rent control, their rents are just as bad, I'm sure, as San Francisco, because geographical features play a difference, and it all comes down to that desirability. New development, somebody said, you know, we've heard different things. We saw in one of the slides, staff trying to make the argument that when you add new development and new housing, you naturally bring the cost down downstream eventually, because you're adding supply into a high-demand area. That makes a lot of sense to me, but we still hear people say, you know, even from the dais, oh, those new apartment buildings are the reason that the rents are high. It may show an owner that they can charge more, but I really feel that that's not the case, that it's the case that when you add more housing supply, you bring the rents down, or at least you help relieve some of that pent-up demand. And also, just interesting to hear some of the apartment owners sort of begrudging the rents that are being charged in those apartments, almost suggesting that if we're going to do rent control, do it on them, but not on anyone else, because they're able to charge more because they have a newer building. At the same time, you know, we are saying, well, let's add more affordable housing. Well, for every unit of affordable housing the city brings online, we get about 10,000 applications. We are never going to be able to add enough affordable housing to make even a dent in housing costs, or only a very slight dent, I believe. Not to say we shouldn't do it, we absolutely should, but we're not going to build our way out of that problem with affordable housing. There's just not enough money, and there's certainly not enough land, and this community would absolutely resist us trying to build 10, 20,000 new units of even the nicest affordable housing. They just don't want to see that kind of growth. So that's the perfect storm. You've got all of this demand, with a lot of people wanting to live here because we're a great city and there's jobs here, and a community that doesn't really seem very keen to add a lot of housing. And you see that whenever we propose something, people say, you know, we had one person get up here and say, you know, this city may built all this affordable housing, and by the way, I'm an owner of an affordable housing project, you know, as though theirs was okay, but not the rest of them. We see people backlash against growth every time we try to approve a project. So there's a real disconnect in the desire of the community. People want to have low housing prices, but they don't want to add more housing.
Are you about?
We do this at the evening session?
Well, I'm just wanting to say this all to set the stage for staff and when this comes back. And I'll just say lastly about rent control, I'm one of the, maybe the only people here who lived in a rent control city. I lived in New York City for four years. My worry about rent control is that it, it's great for those people who get into that, you know, first round of rent control, but if you're a young person or a new family or a new resident wanting to move into the area, you then pay a much higher rent to live in that community. That's my worry about rent control, and that's why I don't think, you know, right now that it's going to be the thing that's going to long-term stabilize housing costs for residents. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Just really quickly, I know we're pressed for time. Over the weekend, I was personally studying the unintended, the unintended consequences of rent control. And among the three studies I found online was something Forbes did in September 23rd, 2012, something that was underscored by an Austrian think tank that was studying rent stabilization. And almost universally, people did not and do not think it's a good idea. They polled 1,000 economic professors in, in this study from the Austrian think tank. 93% said they believe that, that rent stabilization is a very, very bad idea. That's kind of where I am. I'm with Mayor Devine on this.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Ross?
It's, it's very nice, we're having a lot of, all of the, just property owners are just very good, good-hearted. I wish the rest of the city's property owners will be like you guys. But I should tell, my son is getting married. He's going to rent an apartment. He went, he went to Central, two-bedroom apartment was $3,600.
Brings the rents down.
Yeah. At the college area, he did go, it was $2,200. And they, they don't have until this day to rent a place to live, live in. Their wedding is in October. So I don't know, but we need to do, we need to do something to solve this problem, I believe. Anyhow, I don't know.
One more comment, Madam Mayor. Oh, you're?
No, 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 Mr. Garpetian.
One, one, one comment I wanted to make is, as far as building new houses and new units, when you build developments in your city, you need to look at your demographics and try to provide housing for your constituency first. When you bid 4,000 units and it's not for your, for your constituency, then you have a problem, because you have more demand on, on older units. But the other issue is that I want to leave you with is, as a homeowner myself, what are we being fighting for? To keep our interest rates low. Because with even this report, the median income is $50,000. We have to buy properties that our mortgages are maybe $1,500. And we know that's not the case. You know, our mortgages are $2,500 to $4,500. And what are we fighting for? To keep our interest rates low, because if the interest rates jump 2%, 2 points, half the people who own those homes, they're going to, they're going to lose their homes, because they can't afford the mortgage. It's the same thing with renters. I mean, when you, when you increase their, their rents, not you, when the rents are being increased by 30%, 40%, then they'll lose their, their tenancy. And that's, I'm going to stop here, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the time. And this is what happens when you have two big items in, in, you know, one session, and that's what I was saying.
I have a short Glendale pride moment. Councilman, yeah, Councilmember Friedman said you'd love to live in Santa Monica, it's a free country.
No, I said Santa Barbara.
Santa Barbara, it's still a free country.
Santa Barbara, I couldn't afford to live in Santa Barbara.
Ah, come on. Glendale's the best place to live. I'm sticking by it.
Is that all of us? We've all commented now?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I guess what we'll do is put this matter forward to 16th of August.
We'll do the same presentation again? I don't understand why.
No, no, we will actually be bringing forward a series of recommendations for you, flushed out with some of the details that we heard today.
But we'll be open for public comment, right?
Yes, yes, it will be, it will be, yes. So I'm going to ask for adjournment and also say that the successor agency will be moved to next week.
So to the evening?
To the successor agency, next.
Can we do it in the evening?
Next week is?
Tonight's not a closed session, you won't be?
All tonight?
It is a short item, because it really is.
Oh, okay, all right, so we'll do it later on tonight? Okay, so, and there will be no closed?
Why don't we do it all?
You do have closed session.
Okay, so can I have?
Madam Mayor?
We need to return this meeting.
If we can ask people who are exiting the chambers to do so in an orderly manner, so we can continue the meeting.
We still have business, thank you. So I need a motion for adjournment for Council.
Motion was made in a second.
And second?
Okay.
I did, I made it.
And for housing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned.